Two, we're gonna call together the school committee meeting for January nine, twenty twenty five. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the free and qualified citizens, foundations, honor, God, the people, justice, law.
So our first order of business is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from December twelve, twenty twenty four, and the oath to bills in April. So could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I want to accept this consent agenda. Stacy, can you second?
Second. I can second that.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, this is our first opportunity for interested citizens, either in person or on Zoom.
You have to take a vote.
Oh.
You have to do a roll call because she's online.
Okay, so could it? So we'll, yeah, roll call voting because Stacy's on.
Right.
Janine Lloyd, aye. Lane Sandman, aye.
Stacy Damaris, aye.
Okay, motion.
Now it's official.
So this is our first opportunity, either in person or in Zoom, for interested citizens. We do not have any. Okay, so we have no line on Zoom, no one in person, so we'll move on. Um, so let's go to the recognition. Um, our student representative, Rachel Rodriguez. You have first today.
So for Shaker Lane, Shaker Lane will hold its pre-fee information night for the twenty twenty five, nine twenty six school year. Next January sixteen, or January sixteenth at six P M. And the information will be found on the school website, and that link will be available, posted on that evening. For Russell Street, Russell Street had its first stripe assembly this week, and they look forward to bring back monthly school-wide meetings to focus on different elements of showing their stripes. Students who receive at least three green lights per week now in reflex math can enter into a weekly prize raffle. And then the Russell Street online school store will open soon. Families will be able to purchase Littleton and Russell Street apparel and accessories soon. The ten percent of sales coming back to the school to support enrichment opportunities. For the middle school, the lost and found has grown rapidly, and with the temperature rates that keep on going down, they have lots, lots of coats and sweatshirts, so please email the school if your child has lost anything. And then the L M S Drama has a production of Newsies Junior on January twenty fourth through twenty sixth, so make sure, make sure to buy tickets. Lastly, for the high school, they have the sealed by literacy exam this summer.
So thank you so much.
Excellent.
Do you have any updates?
Uh, just a few quick ones. First of all, Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to twenty twenty five. And, uh, our students have settled quite nicely back into, uh, the schools after a holiday break. It didn't take long for, for, uh, everything to gel, so to speak. It's always nice when you walk through schools after a break that, uh, been in it, so it's like, uh, our staff and students really didn't have a break, so it's nice that the routines are set solid. Uh, we're also, uh, adventured our winter sports season, fall swinging now, a good thing. I wouldn't want to be outside playing in this weather anyway, so. So, and, uh, just a, a repeat announcement of the middle school play, uh, Newsies Junior, uh, January twenty fourth weekend. I was, uh, fortunate to be at the high school the other day when they were, uh, having a rehearsal, so I caught a little snippet of what the play is all about. Highly recommend if you're free that weekend that you pick up some tickets and, uh, take the play in. And that's not for me.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so this begins the, um, presentations for the evening, so we have the L H S Environmental Club, um, talking about your ideas and plans for L H S plantings. They're very exciting to present.
Thank you for having us. My name is Rachel Rodriguez. This is Tim Lee Clenchur and Caitlin St. Jellet, and we are representatives of the L H S Environmental Club, and we come today with a proposal to remove some of the invasive species on our school grounds and hopefully present some options with the end goal of receiving approval from you guys to continue forward with this project and to see what comes. Next slide. So our proposal, we have these two highlighted areas. On the highlighted area A, we want to remove and replace the twenty five burning bush plants with native plants, and we'll go talk about that later. And then in the second section, we have the planter boxes, which we'd also like to replace with native plants. Excellent. So our basically, basically, our overall presentation is presenting options for replacement plants in area A on the map and presenting options for plants in area B, uh, planter boxes. And then the timeline and questions, which will have timeline in the project and questions for the committee.
First, we have a burning bush plant, so they are not native to, uh, as part of the country, and they're invasive, which means that, uh, they're taking up space from native, uh, plants, and basically it's a danger to a lot of our native species as well, because, uh, the space where native plants, where they actually, that they're able to eat. But the, uh, invasives are, like, they're taking that spot, and they're also more, they're able to spread more rapidly because they have no predators, because they don't belong here, uh, which means that they continue to spread their seeds, which is why they've ended up in a lot of places, uh, like my yard has a burning bush in it. Um, and they just become native. Um, so our plan is to remove them and to cut them off the ground along with possible, uh, herbicide, which is less destructive, uh, and and then it would take a lot less work to dig them out, because burning bush have extremely deep roots. Um, and they all kind of clump together, so it would just be a ginormous mess. So we're thinking of just cutting them to the stem and then painting them with like herbicide, so they won't be able to re-brow. And then in between where the stems are, we would replant, uh, different options that we're going to present.
So next slide, please. So the next few slides are just gonna go over a few more, a few of the choices we have for that area specifically. And a few, a little, few facts about what that process would look like for each plant, and then obviously, once the, if we get approval tonight, we move on with the highway department to discuss what would be the best option for them, as well as they maintain the school grounds. So this first one is this native brass, and it's pretty easy to maintain. And we would be able to grow it with Erin Jane Jade, who is helping us, that would help us sow the plants as well. So this would be a very good option, and also would not cost too much. And would mostly come from the, um, from the help of students through community service hours. Next slide, please. Next is the shrubbery border. This we would need to purchase. And this is more of an option if we want to make the school look better, which I know has been a recent conversation. I know we added the gazebos in the outside recently. And so to keep on improving on that outward appearance and that look, the shrubbery would also help. This shrubbery would most likely have to be purchased through, uh, nursery, but we would go through that process as well later. And so those are a few of the options, and then the other slide has a few of the pictures. Next.
Um, so some examples, um, the high bush berry, which is, it's tall, but it, like, it's not too big. Um, and also the, the Gota dogwood, which is a lot taller and bigger, but, um, it's pretty. And the inkberry, which is kind of in the middle.
So now we have, um, more native grasses. Um, so again, we just have more examples of the height and the spread. And we're gonna ask later on whether or not, um, the height is, like, important, uh, because if it is, then obviously we would be, um, able to narrow it down. But if it's not important, then obviously we can't grow it in the amount of plants that we can choose from. But if you want the plants to be a specific height, you can try and keep one that would be easily manageable, so you wouldn't have to continuously cut it. Um, so yeah, we have, uh, it would be around like eight to ten, um, of these plants. And then, wait, yeah, plants with grasses around them, which would be more easily grown, uh, than was currently available.
Excellent. And then this final option is the highway department's preferred choice, which would basically be just to remove those plants altogether and not replant anything, because that it would just be easier for them when it comes to keeping the school grounds and keeping that clean, it would just make their lives a little bit easier. And it also would avoid the cost of replacing with any template plant, so that is also an option without that. I don't know why some of the slides are, um, border, which is weird. This is at the end of the presentation, so we'll just, yeah.
We'll come back to that one.
Yeah, it should be at the end too, so hopefully it comes up. So next, we're gonna move on to the planting boxes. We have that same issue with the invasive species.
So basically, we've already dug out all the plants that are in the boxes, because they were littered with invasives. As I said earlier, it does no good for our environment, uh, if it continues to spread. Uh, I know a lot of, like, local, uh, trails are covered in invasives, and it's because they've been able to spread so far through, like, birds, um, and other small animals. So basically, we dug a bunch of the ground. There's only one plant here that hasn't been dug out yet. We left one or two because they were native. But our plan is to fill them with plants through seed sowing with Erin Jade. So it would be, it really would have zero cost, um, and we would be able to plant them come summertime. And basically, the plan also is to get rid of the trees there, um. Forget what they are. I think they're pear trees, but they're also extremely invasive. They're actually all around campus, but trees really shouldn't be in planters at all, because their roots can't grow properly. And the trees look terrible. They're all dying because they're not supposed to be here. Uh, so they don't really contribute much to scenic beauty. Um, but yeah, we won't get rid of, like, every single one, because that's a lot of work, but we just want to get rid of the trees and planters right now, because they're taking up space and they're doing pretty much nothing.
Sorry. And so that's the plan that, then we just spoke about, about sowing the seeds and then how we would be able to uh, replant those planter boxes come spring, summer. And then the next fall, the next few slides are going to be, that's also one part of our plan, so we also did cover some of those box, some of those planter boxes we've carved for the winter for right now. And so come springtime or a few months, honestly, we'll take those out and then hopefully after this meeting, start planning and start getting in that process with Erin Jade and starting that, so we can also get more students to help out with community service hours with that as well. Next slide.
So this was kind of our, like, outline of, um, where, it's not exactly like where we might put all the plants, but it's kind of like a list of all of the things we're thinking of and, like, the, obviously, the bigger ones will have more of the, more variety, but we're gonna try to, like, add as much as we can.
So the next three slides are just gonna be showing different types of native species that we plan on possibly, um, sowing and planting in those planters. Yeah, there's not really much to say. There's just pretty pictures, so you can scroll through those and see the beautiful flower selections.
They're definitely beautiful, and they're extremely good for, um, obviously, we want to continue this project and give it on to younger students, because, uh, invasive species are just in the front. They're all over campus. I know, um, they get what it's called, um, Japanese gnawed weed or something like that is behind the tennis, um, fields. Uh, they're everywhere. They're all around. I don't know if they got, like, a sale on the pear trees, but they're, like, every tree on campus is the pear trees, and they're all dead. Um, and so obviously, and then all the bushes lining the front are also all invasives. Um, it must have been back, I think, when gardening club didn't really check before they sold the plants. Um, but basically, we just want to continue the project. This is just like a starter, um, because obviously you can't do everything. Um, but it would be really good to, um, surround our, um, our school natives. It's like, into, uh, our native bees are currently going extinct. Um, so it would be nice to give them somewhere to, um, be able to follow their neighbors as they are.
So if you scroll through the last few slides of pictures, there's a few more options of the different plants we could get, which also would add a nice pop of color to the front of the school, which I think would be very beautiful, so. You can scroll through the last two slides and we'll get to the end of the slideshow. So like we said, we had already applied the cardboard to the planter boxes, so that was done. The next step, which is step two, is to obtain approval. We would like to have signed approval mostly for the sake of the highway department, because they have told us that they will not continue unless we have the written approval, so that would be our next step in the process. Like I said, they would be able to come and stumps with stones, and that entire process would probably take a little bit, just while we wait for the highway department to get all the supplies needed and everything, but by come springtime, we'd be able to, yeah, have some of the plants hopefully be ready to be planted and start that entire process, so. And then at the bottom, it's noted, again, community service would be available during a lot of these steps, which is really good for students looking to get hands on, so it's not just sitting at a bake sale or doing something, sitting down, like, you're really, you're using your hands to do something good for our environment, which is really honestly amazing and I think worthwhile. And then you might have to go back to the.
Can I change it like this?
There we go.
Would you want me to go back?
No worries.
Okay. So the questions for the committee would be if springtime approval or springtime removal would be all right with this entire process. Obviously, like Timmy had mentioned, this would probably take a few years and unfortunately, not unfortunately, well, we're all seniors here, so we would have to give on this project to someone else, but we'd like to see this, we like to see this as the first step to a lot of good things. So hopefully with the springtime removal, we would start a good wave and get that going for the next few years and have different goals for each school year as well. And so like I said a few minutes ago, what would be seeking from the school committee would be signed approval that we are allowed to continue with this project and for the highway department to do what they need to do to help us. And then finally, like, probably later on, we would be checking in with the school committee again to see what we could do financially. If not, we could raise the money if we end up buying, um, or choosing a plant that needs to be bought from a nursery. That would obviously require financial need, so we would take the steps necessary at that point. And if not, we would continue to request approval if we start moving in front of the school or around the school or anything like that. Do you want to go back to your slide?
Oh, no, it's okay.
I think we're good.
Okay, great. Any questions from the committee?
Hi. Real quick, um, so do you have a point person in the highway committee that you would?
So Steve, um, Steve.
What's he with?
Steve, yes, he is our point person in the highway department, so.
Awesome. And then do you have an adult in the, um, environmental club?
That is Miss Berry right here, who thankfully came.
Because I love, I, I love that you're taking, and we want you to take the lead, but since it is a project that will be over time, if we could have, you know, adults from the school and the highway committee then understand what's going on, so that in two years, we don't look around and everybody's like, well, wait, what happened here?
Oh, yes.
That's the only reason for that.
Oh, yeah. And so Miss Berry would obviously help carry that along, and then we also hope to have support from our gardening club, which is run by Dr. Valerie Finney, Finney, so we would also have another hand on deck to help us continue this project.
And for the money for, like, if you need to buy supplies, many type, um, have you considered reaching out to the, the group that did all those great native plantings around our library and the conservation? There's some groups in our town that I think you might find seed money, um, for your project.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that might be, um, a way to go forward with a little more security, I think.
Yes.
Because I, I, sorry, I love this project. I, I love, I think native plants are very cool. I've been doing this on my, my yard, so.
I think that's a really good, um, advice to, for financials, so thank you for that, and we will definitely look into that contact and see what we can get from there.
I'm providing the seeds too.
Yes.
We all need to use very somebody for potting soil, which is not, not very much, and we enjoy our plant conservations.
Awesome. I mean, like, for everyone they plant, they plant, they want to sell, and, you know, that was fun. Fun for us to come in.
I'm doing the library too, so.
Oh, awesome, awesome. And, yeah, I love it. Uh, Stacy, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I just wanted to say I really appreciate you guys working on this project. I mean, it accomplishes a lot. We're getting rid of these invasive shrubs and plants. You're putting in some natives, and you guys are also getting some of that community service time, so I really appreciate those efforts. Um, I too am doing some, getting rid of some invasive plants, uh, in my yard as well, so I know it's a big, it's, it takes a long time to do. So I appreciate that you guys are starting it, and then hopefully we can get someone else that you can pass the baton to when you guys graduate, so thank you.
So, um, can we make a motion to drive it signed? Um, okay, from us from this meeting, or do we need to, like, do it next week?
No, we can, we can make a motion this, this, this meeting, but no problem at all. But I would also like to thank you for venturing out into this, uh, horticulture is something I'm very interested in, to have a group of students that want to beautify our school grounds perpetuated over time is, is really incredible. So I'm, I'm really excited about this, and I would ask also that if you, you come up with a financial plan, you're gonna need something. Uh, if you would send it to, uh, Dr. Harrington and myself, we'll take a look at it, see if you can help out with it. The Littleton Education Fund may be another avenue that you'd like to pursue, but it's just super exciting. Yeah, we'll probably have some, yeah, funds that we can. I mean, every, every July, I go around to the schools and talk to the principals and ask them what their plan is to make sure our school grounds look inviting before our students are back to school, so having, having students be involved in this process is great. Thank you.
I'm also so excited about the educational part of this. I mean, really, like, what you, the, the research you have done into the difference between invasives and natives and what that does for our environment and, and what we can do to make things better. It's beautiful.
So, so I have a question. When I'm at the high school, I notice a lot of students go out at lunch and sit at the planters under the tree. Is, is, is there a shade consideration here that we need to think about? You know, do kids go out and try to sit in the shade on the hot days? Is that something we need to think about, is providing some kind of a shade?
I think that could be something that we could consider, because I know especially the few months that it's nice outside, kids do tend to go sit out there. I know we did recently also add seating in, like, that little oval in front of the parking lot, which a lot of kids have started drifting to. I think from what I've personally noticed, a lot of kids have started, like, drifting away from the planter boxes specifically, especially now that we have the gazebo, that is one option, or like I said, that little oval with some nice lawn chairs. A lot of kids have started drifting to that side, so maybe wouldn't be that much of a concern for some students, but I think it's something I would consider, but.
All right, and the other comment.
No, they're bald. They're just kind of spinning.
Yeah, okay. And my other comment is I do want to make sure when you plant bushes that we talk to our security people and make sure we're not competing, um, um, camera views and things like that, security cameras, so.
All right.
Thank you. I think this is great.
I have a few questions. Um, I, I really appreciate that you have considered the whole scope of the project by looking at the grounds of the entire campus, but that you are also narrowing your scope to something that's actionable. Because it's, it's easy to get overwhelmed with projects like this. Um, I'm having a hard time in the month remembering where the burning bushes are. Is that along the driveway or?
Something.
Oh, something.
So.
Is that like, so is that near the top of that?
Yeah, it's in the oval on the top, so the entrance to the high school is like right here and then right along the side of the building, just as you leave the corner where the auditorium is and where most of the guidance counselor's offices are. Right along, there's like that fence, which you can see in the picture, and right next to it are the burning bushes.
Okay, okay. So if you, when you're trying to choose what to plant there, sightlines might be an issue, visibility, as cars are going around the corner there, so, um, you know, when you're choosing the species that you want to plant, that's a consideration, and I'm glad that you're partnering with the highway department on that aspect of it. Um, and, and I love all these suggestions of just bringing groups in town to also partner with, like, the Littleton, um, Country Gardeners, and the Littleton Conservation Trust, and, um, but this could be an exciting opportunity to build partnerships within the town, so that's, that's another fringe benefit, I think. Um, with the raised beds, um, you mentioned that there's also a gardening club, because there have been conversations about planting vegetables in the raised beds instead of, um, like, moss.
You know, really that kind of raised.
Not that kind of raised, no.
Done. I don't think that's what. Yeah, this is kind of just one.
Vegetables will be hard there. There's no water there, getting water.
It'd be, it's indirect sunlight for the majority of the day, so it'd probably be a lot of minor issue. It'd be an issue come spring, summertime, so. And I don't know where they have that vegetable garden.
No, I don't, go on. But I used to be next to the comments. They kind, I think they still are. Well, some, I think I was traveling.
Mostly, they're working inside the greenhouse. That's their biggest thing.
And, well, that kind of leads to my other question about sustainability, because, um, once you plant things, they have to be maintained over the summer when it's not in session, so that, um, very often is where these kinds of projects decline, so.
A lot of these plants don't need to be maintained. That's kind of why we chose them. We can kind of just leave them the way they are, because when we were pulling at the beds, me and Caitlin, it was such a mess. There were so many weeds everywhere. It obviously hadn't been touched, like, years since it was planted. Yeah, we found, like, spoons, secret buds, you know? But yeah, it hasn't been maintained, but these are plants that can sustain themselves. And the good thing about native plants is that they're made for our temperatures and our soil types, so they.
They, they work the first year, so first summers they'll need attention, after that, the idea is the thing you can fill in and not, there wouldn't be space for weeds, because of course we would, we want to keep tabs on them, to make sure that subsequent generations of kids and, you know.
Of course, not gardening club can.
No one wants it to go.
The left side, yeah. Yeah, I mean, as, I think as long as we have a plan for that first. Yeah, I mean, as I think as long as we have a plan for that first year to make sure that all of your efforts.
That's where it would be really nice to have the gardening club and people to over the summer um, to help in shifts to water. Just that would be really nice.
And it would be so great with those um, raised beds to plant plants that attract pollinators. Be a whole science lesson in itself.
Yeah, these are specifically fast chosen by a local researcher, Ruma Starman. named Dr. Gir. He specializes in declining species of both the native bees and butterflies and plants. These are very specific um, pollination preservation habitat plants. So he can potentially come and speak to the environmental science club. He's come to the library where he lives. A big part of the choices we made there. Talked to Valerie Finerdy about including um, education around that. So this is like a very specific and very applicable educational project and all part of the partnerships.
So do you have a letter drafted already that you are interested in signing?
I don't think we do, but we can ask specifically what the highway department seeks for the letter to have written down. And then I can get in contact with someone and send that over.
We could, we can make it easy. If you do a motion, so you need um, Mr. Mark will draft a short letter to our department.
Uh, I remember that the school committee, oh, we have one more. Oh, I'm sorry. So what Mr. Witten wanted was written permission to cut the burning bushes in the six frat repairs in the.
Yeah, I've been in touch with, with Steve, so.
I, I made a motion that the school committee um, sign a letter giving the, giving this, this project permission to go ahead and the bushes and trees that need to be cut, we cut. Uh, second. So we need to go to um, Stacy, yeah, let you do a roll call. Uh, Janie Wood, I.
Yulin Sam, I.
Justin McCarthy, I.
Stacy Damaris, I. Thank you, guys.
Steve, if you want to word the letter with specific needs, the exact number of bushes and trees.
Yep.
School committee's in the great.
Yep. Perfect.
Thank you so much.
We pay along, get your email address and we'll, we'll send you a copy.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
I'm just over to just.
Thanks so much. Sorry I was late. Um, so our next presentation will be a financial update. The business manager, Steve Mark, will write an update.
Um, thank you. Good evening. Um, so there are reports on the screen, reports in your packet. Um, as my mantra all year, we're in good shape financially. Uh, there's no concerns. Um, we have plenty, we have money enough to meet all of our forecast needs and budgets. Um, you will notice, uh, if you remember from the last presentation I made, our transportation expenses were a little light year to date. Uh, we caught that up. Um, it was a it was an invoice that was kind of lost in email. So it was actually our case transportation invoice, which they bill us twice a year. Um, so we've not caught it, we paid it. Uh, we're not back on track with where we're at percentage wise with transportation costs. But um, again, there's no concerns over the budget this year. Um, we're in good shape. So, um, you know, we, we discussed the resource officer and those funds for this year, those, that's accounting for uh, in the budget as well. So we're in good shape.
Questions for me? All set, everybody?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Steve? All right, we will hear um, um, sorry, second. Uh, we have one, sorry, we have one item of new business, which is uh, school attendance. So Superintendent Kelly Clenchey will discuss school attendance following the week of summer break. Uh, the reason why I asked Kelly to talk about this was just some other districts had taken the full two weeks. And uh, with the return to office, I noticed that other folks had taken like close to weeks. I was just, you know, and I had heard attendance might have been a little light. I was just wondering if um, if students came back for the Thursday, Friday, or they experienced uh, lighter attendance and not, this is gonna happen every year. Might happen every, I guess every seven years, give or take a leap year here or there. But let us know.
George, after looking at the, the data, happy to report that there were no significant shifts in attendance. So typically when we find the uh, day prior to the holiday break, we had a poor absences the first day back. We have more absences and that, that pattern was the same. So no, no concerns uh, from my end that, that those two days had a, a negative impact at all. And as we vision out with our calendars from year to year, this, this current calendar year without snow days, uh, the way we just designed the calendar, it's June nineteenth, five snow days, it's June twenty fourth, I already meant last week. So we're we had to have that one year of, of early dismissal in June and now we're sitting back to, to a later second last, last week of June. So we're back in that pattern where we were before. So we just have to be cautious since we designed that calendar that we're not going to too far to the end of June. What happens if we we're, we're not aware of what students took apart in community camps, et cetera? We're going to have our, our attendance plummet at the end of the year. So, so far, so good. Uh, I, you know, I'm glad that we took some time looking at it. We usually do. Always nice to, to identify trends and attendants. This uh, educational leaders, our, our job is to make sure that we, you know, really possible to keep our attendance uh, as far as we can. A reminder to everybody, this is blue season. And uh, we're certainly seeing signs of, of, of going through our schools. From our point of view, we step up our cleaning, uh, rails, rails, and rails handles. We fog our schools once a week. So we're doing what we can to uh, to help curtail the spread of germs in our schools. But uh, it's a pretty contagious time of year. Any questions?
Uh, so no noticeable change. It's not like uh, any given day we have ninety percent of population and this day we have ninety percent or something like that.
No, it's, it's pretty similar. So and the, and again, as I pointed out, the day before, the day after, those are just significantly different. Not not excessive to cause too much concern. Just my point of view. We uh, encourage uh, our students to be back to school after holiday break, encourage our families to send their children back. They do have a choice as to whether or not they extend their holiday.
Uh, what we're saying is our last day of school with no snow days.
Uh, would be June nineteenth.
Sixteen.
Harps, no, I have nineteen.
Can't get nineteen, right?
I mean, I mean, calendar, maybe I wrote something down wrong.
Sixteen, nineteen.
Oh, sorry, sixteen, sixteen. So if we have, uh, just, just two, we get out before the nineteenth, the third one's just for the twentieth. So with five snow days, it's twenty fourth. All right. Well, we got the temperature, it's not weird, it's a different situation.
Like you want snow days.
I mean, I don't know. It's, it's cold out. I'm actually, I'd be fine without any snow day. Just put it out there. Okay. Well, thank you for providing the update. You're welcome. Um, so our second opportunity for interested citizens, if there's anybody that wants to speak for the school committee, this is your second and final shot.
Do not have any.
See, no one hearing, no one. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. Stacy, you want to talk about PMBC? You also want to talk about Shaker Lane Building Committee at the same time?
Yep. Yeah. So why don't I give you guys the Shaker Lane Building Committee update? Um, not, not too much has changed since our last meeting. So we did uh, submit our PSR to the MSBA in early December, which I think they had like four to six weeks to review that. Um, so that's the preferred schematic report, which was um, a report of the version of the building that we all voted and approved to go through the MSBA. So they have a very long packet that they're going through all of the details for what we had proposed to them. Um, and I believe on, right now we have a tentative meeting with the MSBA on uh, January twenty ninth for them to, I think, give us feedback on that report. Um, I'm not sure if they necessarily are giving us approval. Kelly might know a little bit more about that, whether or not they're approving it or whether or not it's more of a discussion for us to go back to the table and make any changes that they need us to make. Um, and the mean.
I'll, I'll fill in at the end.
Uh, no, I was just gonna mention too that uh, Studio G is, is still continuing to do a lot of soil testing and septic testing in the area that we decided to build the new building. So they've had a few changes that they've found. So the only thing, the only thing that we have up for a discussion until the twenty ninth is um, on the fifteenth, the building committee will be meeting on kind of the orientation that the building, the, the building can kind of shift in orientation right now because some soil testing came back um, that allows us to actually have the orientation of the building uh, be better than it was uh, before we were able to do that, that testing. So that meeting is on the fifteenth for us just to discuss with them what the test results were and if we, if we want to, I think, change that orientation. But Kelly, if you have more to add, please, please speak to that.
Yeah, great job, Stacy. We, we actually had some meetings this week uh, with the subcommittee. We had a uh, pre-meeting uh, with the FAS presentation that was supposed to be next Wednesday on the fifteenth, but when we on Tuesday, we had a meeting with MSBA Subcommittee. And when they discovered that we were going to consider rotating a building sixty degrees, which would give us a better opportunity for more natural sunlight during the day, also make it more solar panel friendly. Uh, they wanted us to uh, submit a drawing that reflected that, so they changed our our meeting on the fifteenth where we were going to present to them on our FAS two, January twenty nine. At that meeting, uh, Shell and I will, and Studio G will be uh, presenting, we have twenty minutes to present and sell our case. And then they will uh, ask any questions if they have. At that point in time, we will come back uh, to MSBA February twenty fifth. And at that time, they will uh, do a vote as to whether to, the project, the way it's presented. That's our timeline for them.
Are, are the solar panels um, part of the plan or is that a new part of the plan now that the building's able to be?
At, at this point in time, there's still a lot that needs to be discussed, but uh, depending on the cost of the building, one of the requirements is that schools are solar ready. So if they have all the inner workings ready to have solar panels at some point in time and if the project costs are, are positive, we're not we're not at that stage yet. We're, we're hoping to to really pursue a green school. There's, there are substances available if we do that, however the cost of the building. So we're gonna be finding out more in the spring. A better idea of the cost of the building and what kind of things can we do to, you know, uh, a larger reimbursement and also be energy conscious. It'd be exciting. Uh, we uh, had an opportunity to meet with the uh, Council on Aging, uh, Elder Services. Week has gone by so fast uh, on Wednesday. And we had fifteen, fifteen people uh, come to our meeting. We had coffee hour and had an opportunity to talk about the Shaker Lane project. So it was time well spent. It was a pleasure uh, answering the questions. Tell some of the, the new seniors in town that I haven't met before. And uh, that, that meeting feeling really good. And I did send you the flyers or, or handouts that we, we love that. Can be used in future meetings. I, I mentioned in my email today that there is an intent of the school committee to meet with the uh, PTAs and school councils at some point in time. Nori's getting the dates for those meetings to send you an email. And you can certainly use those pamphlets for those meetings. It's basically nice to have consistency. And you have just enough information on those pamphlets to have a robust discussion, but not very little discussion too far without questions. Worked well.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Questions?
I was just kind of curious about the sixty percent. And we, we, so with that consideration, we literally just pick, pick the building, not going to rotate it sixty percent. So as visually designed, I would imagine where the road access would come and everything, we're not gonna lose a little bit of that.
According to Studio G, there, there will be a minimal disruption of, of anything that we talked about. So the parking shouldn't be affected from the conversation that I remember. But, but for, I mean, for all of us, we want to see it. We want to see the drawing and compare it to the drawing that we currently have. Just to make sure. They felt pretty comfortable and this is something that they were hoping to uh, be able to do. And then they weren't sure because of the landlines, whether or not they could put the school into that position. So this is really good news. And we just have to, to wait.
Do you know if this rotating, rotating counterclockwise or clockwise?
I believe it's clockwise.
When you have the update, we, I'll probably like to see it.
We may have a rough uh, sketch of it uh, on the night of uh, fifteenth.
Okay.
So that's what I hope for.
Are there more named sessions planned, planned, scheduled?
Well, the, the last meeting, uh, Justin and I talked about the, the fact that we're at a point in time where we need to go out and talk to some, some groups in town, PTA, school council, et cetera. Uh, we are organizing a tour of uh, the Shaker Lane School for our seniors as well. So a great opportunity to talk about how Shaker Lane has served our needs well. We're all in it. They're really curious to get in there and, and see what we talked about. So we're excited to offer them that opportunity. We're, we're at the point in the, in the process that I hopefully we've, we've reached enough people where they start talking about the project. The school committee members, administration, we need to make sure we can keep this topic alive. We have great materials that we've created. Uh, website is, is, is active. And we need to, we need to keep pushing it this way. Uh, I have met with uh, Gilfoil and they're gonna help us as well on messaging, et cetera. And part of, part of the push will be with, with Gilfoil is when we get closer to the fall meeting where we're gonna take a vote. We will have a little coin, uh, PR plan to, to make sure we get as much information as possible. So I'm still waiting to, to meet with them again and, and we will, we'll take a look at some of the ideas that they have.
Do you remember correctly that you and Pop Mat was the Rotary Club?
Yes, I am.
So those are also good people too.
Yeah, very well received. Yeah, as well. We're a small community and, and once we have people talking about this, it's going to become a, a conversation that, that perpetuates. So and uh, Steve Nudity was, was with us. So we talked to, to the seniors as, as well and our talent manager, Doug was there. It was really nice to hear both of them speak as well. They're, they're on board with this project and I walked away from that meeting on Wednesday feeling really good about what we've done to this point in time. We, you know, from, from what I've seen, Pincom was uh, working with the select board and us to come up with a plan to try to uh, lower the tax, tax impact as much as possible. Monday night, we have a joint meeting, uh, probably don't know about yet. So with the uh, Pincom and Select Board and the other departments, we're scheduled for seven forty five, it's just a touch base. But there's a slide presentation that uh, Steve Nudity will be presenting that takes a look at ways of uh, potential ways of lowering the impact that first couple of years of taxation for the buildings. Excited that we're, we're at this stage. I'm super excited that, that we have a plan that uh, we want to uh, present to the public in terms of how we're gonna do this. And uh, things were starting to fall into place quite nicely. Feel really good about this. So I know when we first started and we had those first initial meetings and when we hit that slide, that uh, the financial slide, since the air left the room. And usually that was the one I got to talk after that. So it was a, it was a tougher conversation trying to bring them back and and it, it is unless you're in construction. and it it is, unless you're in construction or understand how construction costs uh costs have gone up, people always have that magic number in their mind that she can lower the load out, so it's made some huge strides.
It's great news.
You know, we're happy.
So if you folks are interested in attending, we posted for the meeting on Monday. Select Board had invited us to um be part of their agenda on the twenty seventh, which I notified everyone and as it turns out, we still might have that meeting because it might be spillover conversation, but uh the majority of boards were invited on the uh on the thirteenth. There's a little bit of confusion as to who would be there or not, we simply would go, especially since the Shaker Lane project is gonna be discussed. So we could make it on the thirteenth, seven forty five, I guess it's our time slot. And uh I know who's the outcome of that meeting will know if we still have to go back, you know, of course invited back to top one with my seventh grade.
Right.
Would that be at the library, first room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, uh, Vice Subcommittee. Um but uh I'll leave this to leave it to on on my name with the Select Board of Regents Committee. Gratitude, Shaker Lane. I was gonna ask when you were granted the temporary, I figured it's safer for this, any update on any of those capital projects have been identified, like uh every, you know, everything that's fairly holding together is still holding together, like no surprises have crept in? No new information on stuff, looked at quoting or?
No, no, no new surprises, um we're moving forward and maintaining everything and uh um working with the engineer company, well, we went out to bid on the rooftop units at the high school, that project's gonna happen in the summer.
Yep.
Um, the capital projects that were requesting funding for, I think those are still good numbers on working with the engineers.
Right.
So no major updates on any of that.
Why don't we try to put a meeting on the books uh between the thirteenth and the twenty seventh?
Okay.
In case we have to go into greater detail on the twenty seventh.
Okay.
That works.
Okay.
Policies Subcommittee?
Yeah, Janine, surely nothing to report, so we just have the second reading of the policies that are in compliance with student.
Yeah, we so we we presented them last meeting, so this meeting we can vote on them?
Yes.
So um I I honestly don't know what the changes were. Um, you know, I actually did the did the heavy lifting on all of these. Um.
Last meeting, we went through them in greater detail.
Yes.
Gave everyone a chance to think about it and review them. If anybody has anything to report, they've reported that now. If we don't have any concerns, we would both embrace.
We just incorporated a few changes that were suggested that uh
I don't.
A little bit of words.
I have young changes to, but was presented. Do it, I move that we accept the following policies, DA, DB, DBJ, D GA, DI, DIE, DJ, DK, DKC.
Motion made by Elaine.
I'll second.
Seconded by Janine, this will be a roll call vote. Stacy?
Stacy, I.
Perfect. Janine?
Janine, I.
Elaine?
Elaine, I.
Justin votes yes as well. Motion passes. Updated those policies. Cover the Shaker Lane Committee Report. Anything else to report? Get our new business council.
Just to mention, uh, we had a very, very brief conversation in our last meeting with the um release of the uh fact of the competency determination needs to be changed, we started to work on that uh internally. We uh tapped a number of other districts as well and so for principals group, for example, high school principal group will options as well, the teaching and learning group will be looking at options, so we're we're feeling pretty good, uh, I had some samples sent to me today with superintendent Chang Roy. We're pretty well all on the same page, so this this should be a a quick uh process and and we're tent at this point in time is to come February fourth meeting uh by hundred percent.
That's great.
And that will require us to yes, okay, yes, and that will require us
graduation.
Yeah, to change our uh graduation policy.
Yeah.
As as well, so.
Okay.
Feeling good about it, there's a lot of, I guess the only word I could use is trepidation, trying to figure out exactly what state was expecting and and looking to the future, is is this gonna be something that it is going to, we mean as is, or are they going to come back, will the future be to create something for us all to follow, so we need something sooner or later. We're in in great shape uh with our high school right now and we have five uh students and uh we're just taking a look at, so June, January, there's just nice.
Was that, you went to a web a DSC webinar where they provided some guidance for us?
Yes.
And was that helpful?
It was, it was really helpful. I mean, they they uh, you know, one of the things they kept saying to us is don't make this complicated. There's no need to make a college different, you know? And we're we're obviously by law going to use the same courses that that were used before for competency determination, so we're not changing that, it's just a matter of tweaking, how are we gonna determine estimation for our students. And when we met as a group, uh we went through as many scenarios as we could think of in terms of, well, what happens if if somebody moves in from Oregon? And you have transcript to look at, how do we deal with that? Well, we deal with that the same way we currently do. We take a look at the course syllabi and determine whether or not it's the equivalent to what we are operating. We're we're being real thorough thorough on this because we don't want to end up having something done and and then have a surprise. Try very well to do, so.
Do you have another opportunity a year from now if the policy doesn't work out?
Well, we can always change policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I in our way, I I look at this, we're we're gonna get it right, but maybe in a year, there's gonna be something else that that we think about and always come back to the school.
I mean, that takes some of the pressure off of having to have a crystal ball, you know, figure out how it's been applied.
True.
Is there a duty to that? State has the state. Uh.
Well, they just kind of left it in our hands and said, it's, you know, up to you to make sure that you have something in place for your students that will need and you confidently challenge for this year, so. So we need, we need something in place prior to the February, although we are in dirty, great shape, but we all know that students move in uh to districts all the time throughout the years, we just want to make sure we have something in place. Case we uh we've been too
we don't look at uh classes that have graduated to see if any students didn't graduate because of forecast falling. And does the school district share sharing any responsibility to make an outreach or is it upon that individual?
It's upon that individual to to contact us, and if they do, we we would have have something to do.
Large number.
Our graduation, our graduation rate is really high, so.
Sorry, I was, we have not had anyone so far, something I I did check in with Dr. Aaron Jim about a couple times since this happened and no one has reached out yet asking for.
Does it go back to a certain, does it go back to like two thousand thirteen?
To two thousand three.
Two thousand three.
Officially.
A long ways back, oh, that one has started.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So so long as MCAST has been considered the the CD, anyone can come back from two thousand three.
So we have zero students that have not graduated due to MCAST falling?
We're not saying that, we're saying that most students have reached out to us, previous students have reached out to us saying, I would like me to because I did not earn it, because I did not reach the competition at that time.
Fair enough.
And if if we have a student come back from six years, um if it works, easiest thing to do would be to go back and look at their course grades.
Right.
For those courses, if they pass those courses, we're good.
We keep all those records.
That would be really important.
Yeah, just to change subject real quick and give a a quick update, if you recall, um, a couple of meetings ago, Tim Mahousky from Park and Rec came and presented a uh project on the tennis courts and the Whipton Field, so I just want to report that project is moving forward. Um, we met today with the architects and they're they're finalizing the design of the tennis courts and uh design of their Whipton Field, baseball field, so that's moving forward, that work should happen and start uh right after school is is ended uh in June. Uh, and should be done before, hopefully before school opens uh again, so July four, that's moving forward and uh Tim Mahousky and Partner Rec is spearheading that project and doing a a very good job on getting that designed and putting it forward, so. That's it.
Anything else, last call? All right, here, nothing else, last promotion for Gern, Lou Gern?
I'm Lou Gern.
Motion made by Elaine. Presented by Janine, it's a roll call vote, Stacy?
Stacy, I.
Janine?
Janine, I.
Elaine?
Elaine, I.
Justin votes yes as well. We have a Gern.